Good evening. I would like to open the public hearing at this time. And I will turn things over to our head of our community development, Kerry Kerber.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending. I'll go right into reading the legal notice of public hearing so it can be recorded into the record. It's for the Restore New York Program application fiscal year 2022-2023, September 27th at 6:00 PM in the County Council Chambers of the Oleane Municipal Building. The County Council of the City of Oleane, New York has scheduled a public hearing for Tuesday, September 27th, 2022, at 6:00 PM in the County Council Chambers of the Oleane Municipal Building. The hearing facility is handicapped except at 7:00. The purpose of the hearing is to obtain citizens' views and comments relative to the submission of an application to Empire State Development for financial assistance under the Restore New York Communities Initiative. The project involves the demolition of the former Bon-Ton space at the Oleane Town Center LLC-owned Oleane Center Mall building referenced as Oleane City Center Redevelopment Project. Once demolished, the footprint will be redeveloped for a build-out of first-floor retail. The renovation of the site will include refacade and update to the building exterior, demolition and renovation of the common area ceilings and skylights, roof replacement and demolition of the former interior tenant leases and former Bon-Ton suites. Demolition of this space and redevelopment of this site will result in numerous benefits to the region, including the elimination of environmental contamination of light, new mixed-use development, economic growth in terms of new businesses, creation of jobs, and an expanded tax base, further advancing the community's ongoing revitalization efforts. The following property assessment list includes site name and address. There's one property located at 400 to 450 North Union Street. One building on-site, the building one is the Oleane Center Mall, which is approximately 320,000 square feet. It's of commercial use. It's planned to have 166,153 square feet of demolition and 298,000, approximately, square feet of rehabilitation. Majority of a vacant building sitting at 27 acres. Written comments on the city's proposal may be submitted to the City of Oleane Department of Community Development, 101 East 8th Street, Oleane, New York, 14760. Frank Caputo, City Clerk, Kerry Kerber, Program Coordinator. And here with us tonight is Mr. John Bartalatti. And he is the architect for the owner of the property.
Thank you, Kerry. Again, John Bartalatti, I'm a partner with Delphos Architects. We're based on Syracuse, Mayor, 101 North Lynn Street, Syracuse. Our firm has been involved in a lot of commercial retail. We started about 50 years ago, 1971. In the first thirty-eight years of our firm existence, we were designing and creating big retail centers and malls. And somewhere around 15 years ago, the whole landscape shifted in the retail sector. And as you see, there's so many, many, many properties just because of a lot of the overbuilt malls and then the changing of technology, the Internet, all that brought together challenges for a lot of the centers. 2008, '09 kind of pushed the scale over for those centers that they have been surviving to not be profitable anymore, you see, a lot of that. So what our firm really moved to at that point, because we had a lot of clients with a lot of the same properties, they said, what are we going to do with these things? So over the last 15 years, that's what we've been focusing on a lot, is repositioning, rebranding, de-malling, and most of it involves some type of mixed-use. And the reason for that is with the Internet and online sales, that took a big chunk of the margins that were keeping them afloat before away. And that's a transactional function. You know, people can buy, they could value that. So to make a project successful, and what people want now is more of an experience. So if you have retail, you've got to have some type of experience with it. And that's what we kind of set up, set our sites up. It's not the same formula for every zone, every area. We're licensed in 31 states. We work on projects out in Santa Fe, I guess, down south. So we see a good blend of different stuff, but the market is really specific. There's kind of a same, a typical formula, but again, the specifics and the details are very different based on the market. So I met Mr. Gracia six or seven, five or six years ago. First project we did was the Lyman Point Mall in Rochester, which is underway right now. And this was the second mall he, after he did that, saw the success, he brought us into this. This is actually a really good market. And the mall itself, we looked at, is in really good shape. There's two relatively stable anchors there, which are strong, but it's not enough to generate what it needs. So we had to do a whole analysis, market analysis, and a study of what it is, what's that experience? And so what we've come up with through the last year or two of kind of analyzing this is trying to create some type of external as well as internal experience. And so there's this open lot that has the key anchor right at the end, but it's just a big paved park. And there's a dead anchor right there. So the first focus is to try to resolve that, get some activity around there, while reinforcing what's inside the mall, which we've got a nice central library above our prospect in the center of the mall. We've got a sports-oriented concept at the other end of the mall, trying to create different experiences throughout pulling it all together. Right now, what we're proposing here is some exterior and interior renovations. It totals around 2.7 million. There's about a million and a half of roofing and maintenance on the mall. There's another 200,000 of exterior masonry and entrance work. Right now, there's about 120,000 some interior demolition. And then another, almost 900,000 of demolition, being the anchor building sits outside and some of the inline tenants. That all totals about 2.7 million dollars right now. These are all critical, kind of the kickstart for the project to go. In addition to that, there's the residential component that we're working on, which is about a 17, 18 million dollar building as well. And that's key to getting people here. Once you have people onsite here, you have activity. And then you can start supporting what those people need in the smaller retail components and all the other experiences you can bring with it. So it's really hard to get these things off the ground and running because you need to do a lot of stuff all at once to be able to do it. So any bit of help and assistance is really critical to make this work. And the more people can see from the outside, the more you understand and see. That's why I've always tried to attack something on the outside first, so that it helps to see people, oh, it's a change. Because there's typically, there's a public opinion that, oh, it's old, it's dead, I don't want to go there. But when you start seeing the activity, the construction, it really sets the changes around. So I'm here to try to help and give you some answers on maybe any questions you may have. I was just trying to give a high-level overview of what we're looking at, and hopefully this.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Can we open it up to the council members if there's any input, questions, comments? And then from there, we'll open it up to the public.
Kerry, I never want to be afraid to voice my opinion here. You know, when I think of the two biggest needs in downtown Oleane, I don't think we have to look too far. At one end of our downtown, we have the Manny Handi that sat defunct for as long as I can remember. And now I'm not as old as Alderman Anastasia, but that's a pretty long time. But thanks to outside development coming in to Oleane and sharing a vested interest, Severino Development, that's being addressed, and it'll help Oleane prosper. And here, too. The second major hole within downtown, our downtown, is the Oleane Center Mall, which is at the other end of North Union Street. And so after waiting for so long and hearing, you know, lots of rumors as social media lights would pass around, this is really the first, what I would call, real progress, to hear this sort of vision from someone real. And I couldn't be happier. And I'm super excited and supportive of this project.
Thank you, Kerry.
No, I can only echo what John just said, but I think it's, it behooves us to remember that we did a lot of changes downtown. And people, I know relatives that minded that come to town, or friends, they can't believe all the changes we made and how positive it's been. And I think this, you know, becomes a fruition, the way that we're thinking and can picture it, I think it's a plus for downtown. And I think downtown is ripe for, you know, the flowers, the walkable Oleane, we just fixed more of our sidewalks. And I think people are really excited to just see the next step. So my question is, when do you think you'll get started?
Well, as far as I understand, Mr. Gracia wants to do it immediately, as soon as he gets there. He's already in the process of leasing stuff, and he's also working with a residential developer. So we're working through that right now, and I know he's getting pressure to get things moving soon, so.
And applications due October 11th for this portion of the funding. And as Mayor McCall, we helped Mr. Gracia secure $2 million, and he's received that incentive proposal that's been executed, so he's able to push up around that.
And so with like the $2 million that's already been, you know, achieved, then for this particular, you know, possible grant here, are those on, centered around residential, around the reconstruction, the redesign of the mall? Are they allowed to use for both? What's the?
Those star funds won't be used for residential.
Okay.
And the E S D funds are also used for varying construction that is exclusive on the residential.
Okay. So right now, it's the commercial side.
Correct.
Okay.
Is there anyone else?
So, you know, I would say, you know, when I was growing up and I lived in Guanda, we would drive to Guanda, to the mall here in Oleane, versus going to Buffalo sometimes. So I have different memories of it. And I, you know, as I travel around, you know, malls are, you know, rarely survive. I like the idea of a multi-function space, because thinking about it, you know, with the housing that's proposed, too, people have visitors, right? People have, you know, family coming in to check on them and stuff. So I think that it increases the likelihood of success for the stores that are already in there. And so I am absolutely in support of the project.
Kerry, I'd just like to say it's great, too, that this project is taking place. A year ago, since John approached me, as old, I worked at the old AMA store where the Bon-Ton sits now. So that was one of my first jobs. So that mall was prospering back then, it was great, but the mall has seen its better days, and so I think you guys are going to get an excellent job revitalizing that area.
Are there any other older people?
I just want to say, you said you're from Syracuse?
Yes.
So I grew up in Liverpool.
Yeah, right.
And I, every time I go home, I end up driving past Great Northern Mall on Route 31. And what an empty building, what a husk that is now, right? And Oleane Center Mall is quite a bit further down the road in terms of falling into disrepair than that mall is. But if this is something we can do, you can do, to bring this mall back and give it a new life, this building, this property, I think it's a great thing. So, thank you.
Is there any other people?
I can speak on it. Short and sweet. I'm ecstatic. Don't look at it, but I'm ecstatic. Can't wait.
If we could open up, are there any members of the public that would wish to comment or have input, or are there any questions we could answer?
Just excited.
We are, too. There's a couple of things I do want to note for the record, and then I do believe we can adjourn after this. I think as, with the count, the count was before then, it's going to be us seeking permission to make this application, and it'll be our office writing it with a little bit of assistance. So there's a 10% match. Nobody are we asking the city for that. It's the developer owning the 10% cash and committing to it, and that's in the application. So out of the 2.7 million, it's approximately 1.5 million that we're going to be applying for the Restore New York funds. There's the cash on hand from the owner and developer of approximately 270,000, and then he'll be coming up with the financing for the other, approximately 895,000. So it's very secure in the application and in the intent to move forward and the overall project budget of the approximately 18 million. And I believe we can adjourn as there's no more comments or questions.
Okay. So any further comments? Any other comments? Any other comments this time? I will unclose the ball hearing. Thanks, Kerry. All right. 2022. Let the record show that all older men are present. First on our agenda, we have PL 98-22 by Mayor Ilio to certify the City of Oleane County Council's support of an application for the submission to the Empire State Development Corporation, E S D C, under the Restore New York program. I think Kerry and the developer, or the architect, I should say, explained all of that. Are there any questions, additional questions that you would like to ask at this time? All right. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Motion is made by Alderman McCall.
Yes.
And second by Alderman Anastasia. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion is referred to tonight's regular meeting. Next up, we've got PL 99-22 by Mayor Ilio, that the County Council determines the proposed City, Oleane City Center Redevelopment Project in Type II action and in accordance with the New York State Development of Environmental Conservation State Environmental Quality Review Section 617.5, Type II action, sub-paragraph two, and is therefore not subject to further review. Kerry, would you like to make a statement on that?
Sure, absolutely. So you will not see a short form seeker in front of you based on the determination of the section that you cited from New York State D C in the state law and codes. So whatever will be in my supplemental, in my application, I'll be doing a Type II action statement, and it's detailed as outlined.
Are there any comments or questions on that? Okay. Seeing none, I'll entertain a sponsor. Sponsor is Alderman Witt.
Second.
Second by Alderman Panis. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried and is referred to tonight's regular meeting. Next, we have PL 100-22 by Alderman Witt, to amend the City of Oleane Code of Ordinance Section 24-81, subsection C, to include Main Street from the intersection of Front Street North to the dead end, and to designate the speed limit for St. Street, section to be 25 miles per hour. I'll turn it over to Alderman Witt.
Thank you. I wanted to pull this or put, what do I want to say? Postpone it. One of the reasons that I wanted to do that is I've been out, obviously knocking on doors, campaigning, and talking to folks, and I took time to go down to Washington Street, and I drove up and down at different times of day, and I kind of compared with Main Street. And then I put some numbers together. And on Main Street, within a four-block range from Front Street to Newwood, there are exactly 1,200 people that work in that area, which means that many cars coming in, the events, people going to the bar. So I think it's a little different, so I would like to find something that fits more to that neighborhood. So that's why I would just say postpone.
Okay. So are you making the motion to postpone this indefinitely?
Yes.
Okay. Motion is made. Are there any comments or questions? I guess, is there a second to that motion?
This wasn't the, like, Boulevard deal.
Yes, yes, it was.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yes, it was.
Got it.
So I will second that motion. Is there any conversation or discussion, other further questions on that? At the end of the day, Alderman Witt knows what's best for her reward. Feedback says right now that you'd like to look at something different? Go for it. All right. So any other comment, question? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. And so PL 100-22 is postponed indefinitely. PL 102-22 by Mayor Ilio, to authorize, to approve the following Boost Business Grant Program, B B G P, Real Estate Assistance Applications, for financial assistance as recommended by the Boost Business Grant Program Committee, B B G P 37-22 in an amount not to exceed $5,000, and B B G P 39-22 in an amount not to exceed $5,000. This is something that we've been doing now for a while, getting this money that's set aside into the hands of small businesses. I know Kerry can't really tell us too much about any of this, about these applicants. Are there any comments or questions? Kerry, anything to add?
I can give you a vicinity.
Sure, because of vicinity.
All right. Applicant number one, the assistance is for space leased by an existing business on West State Street at its existing location. The other applicant is for space lease for a new business located on Main Street. And just to note, the next rolling due date for applications is Friday, October 14th. And the amount left after the council, so wishes to approve these, will be approximately 19,500 in assistance for, under the Real Estate Assistance Program.
Okay. Thank you for that update. All right. Seeing no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll sponsor.
Sponsor is made by Alderman Robinson.
Second.
Second by Alderman Anastasia. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I will stand for my association with small business development. Second. Okay. Next up, we have PL 103-22 by Mayor Ilio, to amend the policy guidelines for the Boost Business Grant Program to open the Real Estate Assistance Program to all commercial and industrial uses within the city. Kerry?
As Mayor McCall, we were working on creating the programs, policies, and guidelines. When it was in relation to the marketing, it was opened up citywide. And so we had discussed possibly doing that with the Real Estate Assistance, however, we said, let's try it with a target zone. That being the 600 block of North Union Street to the 600 block of South Union Street, the first block of West State Street to 12, and same from the first block of Wayne to 12. We found in this, we've opened up the application deadlines a couple of times, to have additional rolling deadlines. And what we found is people want to apply, however, they're just outside that target zone. They are in commercial uses and commercial-type businesses. However, we've been reluctant and unable to accept the applications. The committee met, took that into consideration, and here I am today asking for the council, who is the designated entity in charge of the program, to amend those guidelines to open it up to commercial and industrial areas.
Okay. So this is, this would just be removing the geographic restriction, but keeping it within the city of Oleane. Any comments or questions? Alderman Robinson?
Well, I was just questioning because with the previous language, was it commercial and industrial before? It was just limited to those streets? Or are we adding the language of commercial and industrial?
It was commercial, industrial in that target area, to those streets.
In the previous language?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Alderman McCall?
I was going to say, one of the things is that it doesn't include East State Street at all, which we have a number of businesses on there that have been impacted, and I think that we might have some businesses that would want to apply there.
Yeah, and I think the original intention was basically well-served, trying to prioritize filling vacancies and supporting existing struggling small businesses in our downtown region. We did that, and as the applicants, applications have kind of slowed, I think that makes total sense. Any comments or questions? Alderman Witt?
I just wanted to thank Kerry for the work in the committee for standing this, and I think expanding it makes sense. And I do believe if you drive around West State or North Union, you see a lot of facades changing and upgrading, and I think that's wonderful for our downtown. It goes along with, you know, supporting the mall. And I think it's, you know, I can't thank Kerry and the committee enough for doing such a great job.
Alderman Robinson?
Just one more question. Just wanted to hear the expansion again on where we're expanding, which areas?
To just include the entire city.
The city, okay.
Yeah, within the city limits.
That works for me.
So very, just exactly the same as the marketing program was.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? I'll go ahead and make that motion. Could I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Robinson. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried and is referred to tonight's regular meeting. Next up, we've got PL 104-22 by Mayor Ilio, to authorize the creation of capital bond 225, Lawrence Street. Mr. Mayor?
Yes. With the ideas that were presented to us by the council for Lawrence Street, we just need to set up a capital account so we can move forward with that. We had pulled, was pulled out of our, tips, not tips, chips money, chips money, so we need us, we need an account now so we can apply to this project.
All right. So just as a refresher, I think last committee or two weeks ago, we had talked about pulling Lawrence Street out of the Millen page this year to make some other upgrades to the street, to continue the White Boulevard from Washington and then down to Lawrence to go into our downtown. And the mayor had offered some different beautification concepts, and we had kind of bounced around some different ideas. So this is just setting up a capital fund for that project, which is still the intention for next year then.
Correct.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Alderman Witt?
Yep. I think this is really great. I had a lot of good comments about what we're doing, trying to connect the downtown. I think with a lot of the new people going into the apartments uptown, they like the connectedness, and I think we're on the right trail, so I would definitely support this.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Being that this is Alderman.
A sponsor.
Yeah, all right. I'll go ahead and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried and is referred to tonight's regular meeting. Anything else for committee of the whole? Seeing none, I'll make motion to adjourn. Could I have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Gonzalez. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. One more time. I'll call to order the regular meeting of the County Council for Tuesday, September 27th, 2022. Please call the attendance roll.
Alderman Witt?
Yep.
Alderman Panis here. Alderman Gonzalez?
Here.
Alderman McCall?
Here.
Alderman Robinson?
Here.
Alderman Anastasia?
Here.
President Crawford?
Here.
Please rise for the invocation and platitude. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage a meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of this community. In your name we pray.
Blessings to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, united, in the middle of the great struggle.
Reading, correcting, and approval of the minutes of the previous regular meeting?
The regular meeting of the Oleane County Council was held on Tuesday, September 13th, 2022, at 6:15 PM. Present were Alderman Crawford, Witt, Panis, Gonzalez, McCall, Robinson, and Anastasia. None were absent.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous regular meeting. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Alderman McCall. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. We've got committee reports and unfinished council business.
None.
How about communications from the mayor?
Yes, we have a proclamation for tonight's, for Manufacturing Month for 2022. Is there anything you'd read?
Special proclamation for Manufacturing Month 2022. Whereas the City of Oleane is proud of its manufacturing sector and corporate leaders who are reaching out to the local community to grow camp. who are reaching out to the local community to grow candidates for the highly skilled jobs they need to fill the workforce. Whereas manufacturing is dependent on innovation and fresh approaches to fuel productivity and economic development, which in turn expands employment opportunities and boosts the standard of living and economic vitality. Whereas this year, Dream It, Do It will provide a month of tours and activities celebrating Olean's manufacturing base. Whereas the City of Olean is supportive of the Dream It, Do It partnership between our local manufacturing sector and our schools that will provide the needed skills to our area's young people and keep them in the community. Now therefore, I, William J. Alio, Mayor of Olean, New York, USA, on behalf of the Common Council, do hereby proclaim October to be Manufacturing Month in the City of Olean, New York, USA. And in testimony thereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Olean on the twenty-seventh day of September, two thousand twenty-two, for the City of Olean, New York. Signed, William J. Alio, Mayor.
Okay, we have Evelyn Speedy here from Dream It, Do It, that I want to present the proclamation to. Evelyn?
May I bring up these people of our manufacturers and downhand?
Sure, that'd be great.
And representatives?
I think you, you both have proclamations.
He does.
Okay. We have George Philgroll from Senator Burrell's office with a proclamation. And we have Wendy Brand here, who's from Joe Giglio's office, Assemblyman Joe Giglio. Who am I presenting to?
How about Liam?
Come on over here, everybody, everybody come right up here. So this is the special proclamation that we ran, presented to all of you. So I think Grandma wants to get a picture. Okay.
George, could you come over here? Wendy?
George?
Get everybody in.
All right, I'll go back here.
She's the young man right here, should we get in there?
There we go.
Okay.
With all the angles.
Thank you.
Okay. So, George?
Can you hear me without a mic?
Yes, you're welcome. Yes, you're welcome. Yes, we're broadcasting.
Oh, all right, I'm sorry. Senator sends his regrets that he can't be here himself tonight. He's actually elsewhere in the district. Were he here, he commend each and every one of you in this room, excuse me, my granddaughter Veda, for your commitment to the economic growth of the city and pursuing those projects that are necessary to continue the city to be the economic engine that it is in Western New York. So he extends to you his wishes for your continued success. Speaking about that, he sent this proclamation to honor this month. Whereas a critical component to maintaining New York's economic vitality involves a focused awareness about manufacturing careers and other career pathways by bridging the gap between industries and schools. Whereas we celebrate October as Manufacturing Month in New York State as a means to recruit and retain a skilled and ready workforce through early engagement of students, teachers, business leaders, career coaches, and community leaders, such as yourselves. Whereas high-paying and plentiful, engaging, and long-term careers, leading to a lifetime of success, are available in the technology and manufacturing sectors for those who seek them. Resolve that as a duly elected member of the New York State Senate, I recognize that in Manufacturing Month two thousand twenty-two, Dream It, Do It, Western New York, we have a collective vision to bridge the gap between industries and educational institutions, which is worthy of the esteem of both the community and the great state of New York. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and signature this Tuesday, October twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Signed, George M. Burrell.
Thank you, George. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Wendy does not have a proclamation, since you've already heard two today, that's probably just as well. But Assemblyman Giglio does certainly second the emotions and the suggestions. And congratulations to all of you who are involved to Dream It, Do It, and how well you have already influenced the younger people in the community, and to the council for supporting all of this, so thank you.
Thanks, Wendy. Who do we have here?
Isaiah Sayers.
Speaker, sorry.
Isaiah Sayers.
Liam Austin.
And you are from?
Jessica Sayers, from Zola.
Okay. And we have George's granddaughter here. So, thank you very much, thanks everybody for coming. And good luck at the soapbox derby Saturday.
Thank you again to the City of Olean for our, thank you again to the City of Olean for our first soapbox derby in fifty years. And to everyone from the city, it was a marvelous success. Thank you again.
Thank you, Wendy.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Anything else? Anything else, Mayor?
No, I'm sorry.
All right, how about miscellaneous communications?
None.
City official reports?
None.
Propose legislation and referrals?
PL number one oh two dash twenty-two by Mayor Alio, referred to Committee of the Whole, Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, by Council President. PL number one oh three dash twenty-two by Mayor Alio, referred to Committee of the Whole, Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, by Council President. PL number one oh four dash twenty-two by Mayor Alio, referred to Committee of the Whole, Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two, by Council President. PL number one oh five dash twenty-two by Mayor Alio, referred to Strategic Planning Committee, by Council President.
Okay, before I open it up to the public, Republican, I'd like to give an opportunity to any of the Aldermen next statement at this time. There's a tie, I don't know. Alderman McCall?
Yes, I have finally beat out Alderman Witt. I've been working on my button. I just want to say, how quickly. I had, had reached out to Chief Richardson in the Fire Department regarding the New York State Health, the Mental Health, Hygiene Worker, the bonus program they had. And I reached out to him because I thought that our certified first responders would, would fall under there. And I have to say, barely had I gotten it out when he had already applied to be able to, you know, because we, we definitely want to do whatever we can to support our, our Fire Department. And so I just commend him on how incredibly quick that he sought that out with the application.
Okay, very good. Alderman Witt?
Thank you.
No, I just wanted to thank the Art Council for a great art show this past weekend, and also Richon for a great tournament down in Garfield. I went down and I was talking to some of the folks. They don't let me play because I'm not that good yet. But it's really nice, and the people I talked to really liked that course. So I think it's really, you know, catching our eye and more people want to be here, or actually use it. So I think that says a lot for our community.
Alderman Robinson?
I just wanted to add in, just looking at things that have happened since I've been on the council, you know, and the upgrade with the mall coming, the way we're moving forward and a lot of the other projects in the city, the projects that we have going on with putting the, the bike pass all together and the Walk of Olean. I, I just want to say, I'm happy to see the direction that we're going, the city is going. And that's thanks to the council, the previous councils, and the mayor.
I confirm. Alderman Gonzalez?
I know, I'll keep this quick, I'm sorry. I just want to point out that I don't think it's really a disputed fact that the reason why we have all these things happening in the City of Olean now, like the Manny Handi, like the mall, like all the other things that we have going on, we have all that because we stuck with a controversial project, right? A project that people in the community reached out and said, this is bad, people will die, go to the grave, saying that the roundabouts were the worst thing that we've ever done, right? And, you know, what are we going to do with the snow? What are you going to do when an ambulance needs to get through? What are you going to do when trucks, it's going to kill dress well? I won't go there. But needless to say, without this project, right, that, that Linda Witt stuck her neck out to do as mayor, right? Jeff Belt, and all the other constituents that were involved, stakeholders that were involved in that. Without that, none of this other stuff is happening, right? And it doesn't sound like, you know, like all the traffic lights helping that have done, you know, it's the investment, it's the care, it's the, you know, like I said, the investment in our community that we did, that we knew was right, and took the backlash and, you know, pushed through it, and we're, we're better as a city because of it, so. My, my. You know what, Paul, I'm a, I'm a piggyback guy. Piggyback, yeah. Because I, I like that soapbox. You know, you live into like a finance, right? A finance guy that looks at it as pure risk and return relationship. And, and the City of Olean took a risk. And now we're seeing the return. Some, some may deny it, that it's, that exists. But I also not only want to say that the risks that we've taken in the past, Paul, but also the risk that we continue taking, right? You know, I, I recall seeing, I mean, in every different size, from small things to, to larger scale things, like getting rid of a municipal pool that hardly anybody uses, and revitalizing that park space, or bringing in bird scooters. I mean, I, I distinctly recall hearing the word chaos, that that would bring chaos to our downtown. I've yet to see tires burning. But, yeah, we need to continue pushing down the logo strategically, when it makes sense. And, and I'm proud to work with the council, with the mayor, and with department heads that are, that are willing to, to look at that and, and consider those choices, so. Thank you, Paul. Just one more example, there was a, there's a prominent citizen, I won't name him by name, but I recall somewhere on Facebook, you know, how much I love reading all the Facebook stuff, right? And when we did the Lincoln Park Project, he specifically said, look at the park that they wrecked by putting in that pavilion, right? That park gets more use. Olean has a homecoming there, there's farmers market that's busy every week. And it went from like this dormant park that nobody really goes to, to something that gets used every single day. So, trust, my, you know, I'm not going to be on the council much longer. My advice to, to the future councils is trust your gut and don't listen to Facebook. Thank you for that.
And the other thing I'd like to add, and it is.
Alderman Anastasia?
This year, I've been getting so many compliments about how beautiful downtown Olean looks versus last year and other years, we made the weeds overpower. So kudos to whoever the volunteers were, the mayor, the city crews, whoever is out there, make it on the end, be as good as it can.
We have, we have to give a lot of that credit to the beautification committee. They work very hard, and they're a little temperamental, and I'm okay with saying that, but they work very hard. And we do have a lot of people that are volunteering their time to, to do cleanup duties around too. So we have a volunteer reception coming up later next month. Would you allow to get the fires on that? We're going to give them a little piece of barley and thank them for all their hard work.
Yeah, that's, that's great, Paul. To go along with that is the investment that's been made, the new flowers that have gone in there. And, you know, like Dave said, like, a lot less weeds, it seems to me.
You know, every year, I go down to the county's awards banquet for the seniors who volunteer. And they save how much money that is saved accounting because of all these people volunteered. And it's, you know, it's, it's a million, it's a million dollars. So we're going to start to track that and, and just take a look at it and say, hey, here's what the good people of Olean are doing for their community.
Great. All right.
Can, can I make one more comment? I want to piggyback off that, Mr. Mayor. I did, this might be, I don't know if this is a controversial opinion or not, but I think the sections of the, the median that are grass look so good that it's almost a little like disheartening that the whole thing isn't like that. I don't know, I know we had to do it like with the weird plants and the gardens and all that stuff for a while there, but if we owned it long enough where we can do what we want with it, like.
That was actually.
We have warranty now, can we just start customizing that?
That was actually the ideas of the beautification committee.
Okay.
To, to make it grass, and we're looking at other sections now to possibly do the same there.
Yes.
Carrie, Alderman with?
Sorry, I just had to edit two cents. Like I said, the uptown looks wonderful. And, you know, I just want to thank Carrie again. You know, she worked with so many people, the Manny Handi people, Jeff Belt, so many people to really make things happen. And this past weekend, we helped our son move in to one of Jeff's apartments. And there's already a couple people from Bonaventure that live there, you know, younger people. A couple older couples are going to be in there, and Manny Handi, I think, is getting close to people coming in.
I love that you would say older people.
I understand. But I just think none of that would have happened unless we had faith in what we were doing for downtown. And I just think that people, some people are finally seeing that we'll always have pay shares. But I just want to, again, thank Carrie and her hard work, because she's put so many hours into this. And now one more project on our plate with the, the mall. And I think that hopefully it will turn out, you know, as good as the rest of downtown. So I just wanted to take that opportunity.
Absolutely. We're all very appreciative of our Community Development Department, which is two people. So a lot gets accomplished by the Department of Two People. Thank you, Carrie. All right, so, now that we've all had a chance to dance on the soapbox here, so. Will the clerk please read the public comment statement?
The public comment portion of the Common Council regular meeting is established to provide members of the community with the opportunity to publicly state their views, voice their concerns, or to provide input pertaining to any issue affecting city government. Additionally, the mayor, common council members, and city department heads encourage any person with questions to contact them at their offices.
Okay, at this time, I will invite in members of the public to approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. You have five minutes. Anyone from the public? Anyone from the public? Last time, anyone? All right, at this time, I will call public comment, close, on the findings and bills.
The auditor has processed bills and claims against the City of Olean as per listed to each alderman and recommends payment thereof. Whereas the auditor has presented to the Common Council bills and claims against the City of Olean totaling one million eight hundred seventy-three thousand, three hundred twenty-two dollars and forty-nine cents for the budget, and recommends payment thereof. Now therefore, be resolved that the same be, and are hereby audited and allowed. And the auditor is hereby authorized and directed to draw warrants for the payment thereof at the amount set opposite each respective claim.
Okay, we all received the auditor's report and bills and claims. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a sponsor.
I'll sponsor.
Sponsored by Alderman McCall.
I'll second.
And seconded by Alderman Witt. All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Pass unanimously.
All right, on the resolutions?
Resolution number ninety-seven dash twenty-two, PL number ninety-eight dash twenty-two, to authorize the mayor to sign and submit a grant application to the Empire State Development Corporation under the Restore New York Program to secure funding for demolition and rehabilitation of property owned by Olean Town Center LLC at four hundred to four hundred fifty North Union Street.
All right, just talked about this in Committee of the Whole, any comments? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll? Uh, yeah?
McCall, yes.
Yes, sponsor.
Yes, McCall and Anastasia.
Anastasia.
Is that from the committee?
Yes. PL ninety-eight dash twenty-two. Okay?
Yes.
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Resolution number ninety-eight dash twenty-two, PL number ninety-nine dash twenty-two, that the common council determines the proposed Oleane City Center redevelopment project, a type-two action in accordance with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation's State Environmental Quality Review Section six one seven point five, type-two actions, see subparagraph two, and is therefore not subject to further review.
This one two is discussed previously. Any other comments? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Okay, just that, that was Alderman Witt and Panis that sponsored that, right? You got that?
Aye.
That was maybe a better. Witt and Panis.
Resolution number one hundred dash twenty-two, PL number one oh two dash twenty-two, resolution to approve Boost Business Grant Real Estate Assistance Program applications for financial assistance.
Okay, it might be a, it's out of, I missed one because I had PL one hundred twenty-two. That's what it means to me.
One.
The P, the PLs and, uh, the PLs and the resolutions are very similar.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so this is PL one oh two dash twenty-two. Resolution one hundred dash twenty-two.
Okay.
Okay? Yep?
I do have it by Robinson and Anastasia.
That's correct. All right, uh, any other comments, questions? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
I will abstain from my association with small businesses development, sir.
Roll of six eyes and one attention. Resolution number one oh one dash twenty-two, PL number one oh three dash twenty-two, to amend the policy guidelines for the Boost Business Grant Program to open the real estate assistance program to all commercial and industrial uses within the city of Oleane.
All right, talked about this one previously. Any comments? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Resolution number one oh one dash twenty-two, PL number one oh three dash twenty-two, to amend the policy guidelines for the Boost Business Grant Program to open the real estate assistance program to all commercial and industrial uses within the city of Oleane.
We just did that. We just did that one time.
Yes.
I repeat?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
We're on one oh two.
Resolution number one oh two dash twenty-two, PL number one oh four dash twenty-two, resolution to create capital fund for Lawrence Street.
Okay, talked about that one. Any other comments? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Alderman Mc, Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Okay. Anything else? Saying none? Okay, go to your turn.
I just want to keep going.
Okay. Wow, motion was made by Alderman Anastasia. Go to your turn.
Second.
Second, wow. All in favor? I oppose.